Call the November meeting of USD 350 Board of Education Order. Welcome. Any additions or changes?
I have no changes to the agenda.
Mr. President, move that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side? Motion carried. Consent agenda.
I have nothing unusual to report on the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side? Motion carried. Okay. Superintendent contract.
You have my contract. This is just a discussion item. For rolling over my contract for a further two years. So it would be for the next year and the following year. No discussion about paying benefits now. We usually do that after we discuss with the teachers and negotiate that. So if anybody had any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Otherwise, we'll just approve at next month's meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Josh. KASP convention.
Bear with me one second. I'm trying to get this sent to our teacher rep. She can get signed on to the meeting. I don't know why I'm having trouble here. So the KASP convention is virtual. December 2nd through 4th. And if anybody would like to attend, I can get you signed up. Debbie has already said she'd like to attend. And if anybody else would like to attend, we can assign a convention delegate. But we have to take action as a board to specify who we want to do that. So Debbie said she would be glad to do that. If nobody else is just chomping at the bit to do it, I recommend approving Debbie to be our voting delegate for the convention.
So be it. Thank you, Debbie.
You're welcome.
You'd like to take action on that?
Okay. We'll get a motion.
Mr. President, I move that the board approve Debbie Waddle as the delegate for the 2020 KASP convention with no alternate.
Yeah. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we approve Debbie Waddle as the delegate for the 2020 KASP convention with no alternate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing side? Motion carried. Congrats, Debbie.
Thanks.
All right. Communications, board member activities. We'll start with them on Debbie.
Um, this next meeting, we're going to be doing the evaluation for the new director, Dr. Doc Bob Ethan Brock. Last meeting, we had two presentations. One was from E. Luma, and they helped with our therapists, especially during side evals and IEPs. And it's all a virtual help. And then we also had the director of the Life Skills Program at Caskin give a presentation and the Life Skills class prepared to serve for us that we had that night. Other than that, it was just the same stuff.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
All right. Fans?
In hearing.
Yep.
Yep. I just want to congratulate our volleyball team for going to state and doing well, and also congratulate the cross-country team. That's all I got.
Thank you. Sean?
No.
Same with volleyball, but also everybody still dealing with their thing at school. I mean, I think you guys did a great job. Must look good to be there with.
Carl?
I don't have any.
Administrative reports.
The, we had our parent teacher conferences, different format where some people could choose phone or virtual meeting. I thought they went pretty well overall. I thought we had a pretty good turnout. We don't have the exact numbers like we would in the past because people didn't come into the office and pick up grades. We mailed them out. But I did get some feedback that maybe remote phone conferences in the future even would be something that some people would be interested in and more likely to attend. So that might give us a new option in the future. So it might be something we're looking at. Wednesday, we were supposed to have our Veterans Day program. Had a really good turnout last year. After some discussion and consideration, we decided not to do it because we're bringing a lot of elderly people into the building and possibly exposing them. Just didn't feel like that was a good thing. So instead, we're gonna, we're gonna not have that this year, but like our Ks and Kets and FCC LA are doing some things for some of our local veterans, and they'll be out delivering those things on just some packy, you know, packy goodies and stuff on Wednesday. If you go by the high school entrance, the Ks and Kets put up a really cool flag out front, you know, in the windows where it shows through, just to kind of honor those veterans and keep that going. And we'll continue to plan on doing that in the future. And just like was already mentioned, congratulations, our volleyball team, third at state, competed and represented the school community well. Also cross-country win, and they were three points off of fourth place, I think is what it was, but they competed really well. I went up to Victoria and watched them, and they competed well and represented well also. So they ended up fifth. This week with activities is Casia Buffer Week, so far as high school activities, we can't have anything going on in the gyms after school. It's a moratorium to take this week off. So there won't be anything going on high school-wise, practices or anything. No shootarounds, none of that. Junior high basketball does start this week. Thursday, we play Otis Bison, our first team here. We have 26 boys, which is quite a few, and 22 girls with two managers. So got pretty, pretty good full teams there. Our school musical is Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this week. We talked about not doing it also, but decided to go ahead. We'll get information out really soon, like tomorrow, on that as far as attendance goes. We're gonna try and keep it somewhat limited, but still allow everybody that wants to come to come. They might just be limited to one performance or something. Get that info out, but pushing up against the deadline. But that is this weekend. And the musical is Little Women. I have nothing, I know nothing about what that is, but. The last thing I wanted to bring up was every eight through 12 student has to have what's called an individual plan of study. And we've been doing that through the Career Cruising platform, which you may have heard of. Career Cruising is changing to a different platform called Zello, so there'll be some of that. We've done it. We've had it in place. We haven't been real great at it, so we're gonna try and be a little bit more intentional. And what that does is just kind of attracts kids' interests and things as they go through school to help them choose classes and maybe choose some job shadowing and work-based learning, which is something else that we'll be looking at more opportunities for students is to go out and job shadow during the day. So if they get a field narrowed down, they think they might be interested in, we can get them into it and maybe help them eliminate that if they decide they don't want, or help them really go into it. So that's some things we'll be talking to some local businesses and even perhaps Great Bend about as far as getting kids out and in the community and using our community resources in the future. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Roger.
Just a quick update. We did have a positive case in our office this morning. Learned about that. We worked with the health department on contact tracing. As far as having a close contact for the required period of time, there is none. But we're gonna be very cautious about this. There was a limited amount of time. That person was in the office this morning. We all had the masks on. She tested positive, went home immediately. And everybody else in the office did take a test today and it's negative, so we've not contracted the virus. So worked with the health department on that. We'll, for this week, work from alternate locations, and we've got somebody coming in to make sure the elementary office stays open because that's pretty important for parents to be able to get their kids, bring stuff in, whatever. So again, we're just taking it upon ourselves to be very cautious. So the modified quarantine, we went through that procedure with our first graders. We had a, one of the teacher aides tested positive, was around a lot of those kids and the staff between both classrooms. So it wasn't like that person was in with those kids all day long in one enclosed space. But we did, again, just being very cautious, had them in the modified quarantine. They did all their schooling over here, and the two teachers, you know, did all their teaching here. The days they could get outside, they'd just go out in the library yard and play. And nobody ended up getting sick that we know about, and they're back in the classroom and everything's, everything's fine. So we felt good about the way that process worked. Those teachers don't get a planned period, and they don't really get a lunch break. So with the two teachers down here, they were able to, if somebody needed to just step out and take a quick break, they could do that. But if we end up with one teacher in here, it's a little more difficult to do that. So we learned some things, but I think that's a decent setup for keeping some potentially exposed students and staff still in school, but separate from the student body. Our testing program is up and running. We started that last week, so this is just diagnostic testing pilot with KDHE. They provided all the tests. Nurse Lisa went through some training on that. And so if there's symptoms or a specific reason we need to test somebody, she can administer that test. What we did today, she brought a swab, and we swabbed our noses, and not the deep ones, but got it in there pretty good. Made your eyes water. And then she takes the sample and tests it. 15 minutes later, we find out the result. If there's a positive result, then that person needs to get the other test done, the PCR test, which is, which takes a couple or three days to get the result. That has to be sent off. They can do that at their doctor's office, or we can administer that here. Lisa still needs to go through the training on that one. So these rapid tests, they tell us if there's symptoms and it's a positive test, that's 97% accurate. So we feel pretty comfortable that if someone has symptoms and they test positive, it's a good indication that it's probably COVID, 97%. So I feel good that we have that here, and even with our case, we were concerned that had we been exposed, just so we know moving forward. Our food service situation worked pretty well. We had a contract with Great Bend to provide those meals. They delivered the meals here, prepared them there. We had to serve them here. We just pulled, you know, Lisa and I did some of the work and pulled some other aides. We had a food service sub that had been in the kitchen before and was able to help, and she was a great help. So I can't thank Great Bend enough for their help on this. I know it was a lot of work for them, so we'll send them a letter of thanks. I just can't thank them enough. We were able to keep our kids in school and be able to feed them, keep them in school. Crowd size limits, very concerned about that with the way cases are blowing up in our county and in the state and a lot of places. Right now, for basketball, we're looking at 50% capacity. That means about a little over 450 people in the gym in the stands. We may need to limit that further to maybe only 100 per team or even less than that if we get to a point where, you know, we want to, if we can still have the event, we want parents at least to be able to come and watch, but might have to start limiting that further. That's just a decision that we're gonna make as we move along, maybe with some conversations with the health department, making our best judgment on that. So I don't really want to have the board take action on that and say we need to do this, because then we'll have to meet if we need to make adjustments. So if you guys are all comfortable with that, that's what we're looking at right now. So.
George?
Yes?
Have they got that camera system up and working or doesn't help?
It is, and we need, we need to get information out about signing on to that. So that's one of the bullet items here. Yes, it is up and running. We tried it out at the volleyball. We didn't send out information for people to log on. We were just kind of doing a test to check it out. But right now, our setup is people need to pay, it's like 11 bucks a month, or you can pay $70 a year, and you can watch events on any, any events on that network. Our school district, I believe it's $3,000 we can pay, and then everybody can watch it for free. The downside of that is we would pay $3,000 and Vance can watch his kid play at home, but when we go to Victoria and you need a subscription there, he's gonna have to get a subscription just to watch, watch it at Victoria. So we don't really have consistency in the league right now. Some are paying the fee, some are not. So right now, our setup is to pay the fee, and we'll see, once we get going, how many people do that, and maybe look at changing that down the road.
And this junior high game Thursday will be on it. We'll know for sure that it's running and all advertised for everybody that it's available on NFHS.
Josh, is that on calendar here? So if you pay 70 bucks a year, you start in Victoria?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's 12 months, I'm pretty sure.
Whenever you start.
Because it's $11 a month, but if you figure that out, you're into your seventh month before it pays off. You're about better off with, with two seasons like we have to pay the $11 a month. But if we had baseball, for example, and we can, we can show track, I just don't know how, you know, you'd be able to see the whole track. So I would, if somebody asked me what I thought, I would suggest they start off with the $11 a month. You know, for high school games, you pay five bucks a game to get in.
So the house remodel, that's going well. If you'd like to see the progress on that, I'd be glad to show you anytime. What we're looking at now, we're, we really need to nail down our floor plan and things that we're gonna change. Adam Blaine and I met and kind of hashed out some of these, but we still have some lingering questions of how can we move the floor plan, or should we move the floor plan? What should we do different there? And we really need some, some more input, and I want this board to have some input in that. So if any of you would like to volunteer, I don't know that we would get together and meet, but maybe send out some information that if a couple of you want to be on a committee, I can call you or send you an email and say, here's what we're looking at, what would be your choice? And even down the road, when we get into finishes, what cabinets are we gonna put in? What colors are we gonna do on the walls? Things like that. It should just be more than a decision that Adam makes or that Mr. White and I made, and we need a little bit of input. So if anybody would like to give input on that, just shoot me an email, let me know if you'd like to serve on the committee. So the main floor, this is the existing floor plan. This is the front door here. This will be the back door, and then you come in, the kitchen here, and then these are stairs going down. It's also stairs going up to the loft right in that area. So the kitchen area is here, dining area is here. This is the bathroom and closet, and then bedroom, bedroom, and then living area. So we're looking at taking out these walls and opening the space and potentially moving the stairs over to this area. It's not a good situation, like to go down in the basement, you almost have to go out into the garage area to go down into the basement. So having that more of a livable space, moving the stairs here also allows us to open up this kitchen. It was a galley kitchen with, you know, cabinets on this side and this side, and very narrow. So that opens that area up for kitchen. Maybe, Adam's even looking at maybe the kitchen over here and dining space back here, but that really opens that up. Steals a little bit of room from this area here in the living area, but there's still plenty of space there, especially if we open this up. We may look at moving a closet to a different area so we can open up that bathroom a little bit, get some more space in there. It's pretty small. And the basement, the stairs would come down into this big living area, so a den or family room. We've got the two bedrooms here. They've demolished the walls here in the bathroom. So we're looking at mechanical area here, bathroom here, maybe make that bedroom a little bit bigger. And we're not sure if we can move this wall because it's structural, so we'll look at that, maybe open that space up a little bit more than what it is right now. And then doing something different with our laundry area, incorporating this part into the living space. So looking at options for that. And then that loft would just be a bedroom, so the stairs would come up this way and you'd enter here, and probably closet back in this area. So it'd be, we'd end up with five bedrooms and two bath in the home. So we're looking to do an all-new, new electrical service, new sewer, new water service. Start fresh with all that. Any questions about where we're at on that right now? All right. Our Midwinter Classic, we've got seven teams coming for boys and four for girls. We'll end up doing this on five nights, so it'll be Monday night, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Right now, we're planning on having it here. We've got contingency plans to visit with maybe a neighboring school that could we run some games over there? Worst-case scenario, I think, maybe we could just, if Maxville plays Larned, maybe they just go to Larned and play. So we get the games in, but we're not bringing everybody in. So we've got some contingency plans. Right now, we're, we're planning to host it, maybe have to limit crowd size, maybe not have crowds at all. It's concerning bringing a lot of different teams together, so we'll just have to see how it plays out when we get there. But I think we've got a pretty good schedule set up for, for the games. The girls' teams will just play each other one time, you know, round robin with four teams. And then the seventeen boys tournament would be similar to what we've had the past couple of years, we've had seventeen. So I think it'll be a good event, and we're not gonna do special concessions. You know, if the Booster Club wants to do a soup supper or something like that, they can do it. We're gonna run the concessions like we do on a normal night, try to get through this year, maybe look at expanding and doing some other things in the future, but.
The teams that are boys are playing that don't have a girls' team, are they playing towards else? Why are they not bringing a girl?
Some were committed to other tournaments. So I think Brian Watts, Mr. Watts is pretty confident here in a couple of years, we'll have eight boys and eight girls.
The trend used to be boys go to one tournament one week and girls go to another, so we're going through that cycle, I think, more people are wanting to go boys and girls in the same location.
And things like, you know, the tournament hosts and providing towels and, you know, those things, we won't, we won't be doing all of those, those extra things. We just don't have the bodies to do that. We feel we can still put on a pretty good tournament, so. Our financial audit was completed here, what was it, two weeks ago? And everything looks fine. They'll be here in December to report. So nothing unusual to report on that. The north entrance, we're looking to do a black lettering, raised letters on the two wing walls there. And then this mural is what they came up with. I really like that. It's kind of a brick pattern, blue. So that'll be something where we can see out, but it's difficult to see in and just see the logo, so. Although if you've seen the American flag they have up for Veterans Day, but it looks pretty cool.
Goodbye to night, it looks really cool with the lights shining on.
So Booster Club's gonna cover the cost. I think it's 1,800 for the mural, the window film, and we'll take care of the rest. One more item I didn't have on my bullet points is the Rec Commission. They're looking at doing a lease, a lease purchase for their building. You know, they've, they've got that, that building, they want to remodel and equip that building to be used for, you know, weight facility, exercise facility. So they're looking at a five-year lease, $100,000 total, 75 of that would be for building improvements, and 25%, or 25,000 of that would be for equipment. That's all on them. That's what they've decided they, they want to do to improve that facility. But it is, any lease that the Recreation Commission enters into requires this board's approval. So we don't have a lease yet. They're getting proposals from, from different banks. I've seen one of them. I'm not sure where they are in that bid process. I don't want to show that here in public. But the, the terms for that look very reasonable, five-year lease for $100,000. So since we're the taxing entity, we need to approve that. So I guess my question to you would be, do you all have a problem with that? Because if we do, we need to, I guess, let them know that, but it's not really our decision, but we do have to approve that. We're not making all those decisions of what they're doing with the lease. Sean, did you?
Go ahead.
No.
You're good.
So if you all are comfortable with that, I can let them know that, yeah, go ahead, and we'll, we'll just formally approve whatever lease agreement is when they have that drafted. Any initial concerns there from anybody? Any initial concerns there from anybody? No? Okay, alright. If you do have concerns, let me know as quick as you can and I can, we can get questions answered. But so at a future meeting, when they have that lease agreement drafted, we can then formally approve it. That's all I have on my report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Parker.
Yep.
Okay, executive session. Personnel, we need to talk about the performance evaluation. If somebody wants to make a motion there, we'll do it with just us and then we can bring Josh back in. How do we control there to make sure?
I already texted Mrs. Venky about it. Mrs. Venky, we're gonna go into executive session and there will be no action after this executive session. So you can go ahead.
Okay. Someone wants to make a motion?
Ah, yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, yeah, she's on.
Probably what, five, 10 minutes? And we'll bring Josh back in.
Mr. President, I move that the board go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's performance evaluation pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KO MA with nobody to be included. And we return to open session at 6:37?
Check it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that the board go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's performance evaluation pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under KO MA. And we return to open session at 6:37 in this room. All those in favor, say aye. Opposite side? Motion carried. All the meeting back to order. Resignations and contracts.
I have nothing there.
Okay. Future agenda items.
Approve my contract and then we'll have the audit report next month. Looks like another light agenda.
Okay, thank you. Motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same side. Motion carried. Thanks, everyone.